This is the East Aurora Union Free School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, November sixteenth. Please stand and join me in the lecture. I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss matters related to funding litigation, collective bargaining with the EA AP, collective bargaining with the East Aurora Civil Service Personnel Association, matters related to a particular student and the employment history of six particular employees. One by Mr. Cassidy, second by Mrs. Daniu. Discussion, all of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed, dissenting, carry six, zero. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We are returning from executive session where we discussed three matters related to funding litigation, collective bargaining with the EA AP, collective bargaining with the East Aurora Civil Service Personnel Association, matters related to a particular student and the employment history of eight particular employees. Moving on to item three. Moving on to item four, reports and discussion items. We will begin with the capital project.
So we're going to continue with our capital presentation anticipating the vote on December fourteenth. So Steve Shorowski, he's our head architect at the Charnes. He sent over the presentation at this time, but also he had representatives from Buffalo Construction, our financial advisors, so we'll be able to keep you answered questions on what's at stake.
Quick question. Last month's meeting, we were unable to hear on the video. Is there something that you got my T S microphone up, but I don't know. Are they for the video purpose or for the audience purpose? Video?
Yes.
Video. I noticed there was a speaker there, that's why I.
Yeah. Those are for the microphones that are on the table. That will amplify before talking, so everybody's picked up on the video.
That one is. Thank you for your feedback. We'll continue to work. Welcome to the old media center that will soon be the new media center. Glad that's a list. Go for it, Steve.
Glad that's a list. Yes, thank you for having me back again. Here to give just another brief update on the project. The presentation has not changed significantly since the last meeting. So for new attendees in the audience or anyone who may not have been here, I'll go through the presentation again. But the hope then is to open the floor for additional questions or comments that the board members obviously have or the community has. So. Going through the agenda quickly, like I said, brief history of how we got to where we are today, what is in the capital project, and then open the floor for Q and A at the end. So as this has been mentioned before, the project all started with the building condition survey from two thousand and twenty-one, which identified a series of items that were items that needed to be addressed for the district. Those were life safety items, maintenance items, functional items, ceilings, floors, walls, et cetera. Each of them were graded with ranking, whether they had a year, number of remaining years of usable life, and then a cost and a priority associated with that. What happened from there is that that list was taken and brought to the administration and shared, and other items were added and feedback was received from various departments. So really, two parts of the same project would eventually build the capital project here. Health, safety, welfare items, things like ADA improvements, unsatisfactory items from the building condition survey report, and then program spaces, community input, other things. Often those two things align. The example that I've used in the past is the tennis courts. Definitely something that we heard from the administration, from the athletic department, that they were in need of repair. It was also the only item on the building condition survey report that made the entire district. So we had prioritized lists from there, and there's obviously, in any type of list or situation, there's more work that can be done or addressed at a given time. Some items may not be need to be done for ten years anyway, but they go on the list as items to look at down the road. And those prioritized lists help us formulate and help the district formulate a long-term plan. So that plan is really what is the bones of driving everything that happens in the next ten to fifteen years. It's a maintenance plan. It helps everyone understand what might be coming in the future and what needs to be done, and then be able to address those in a timely fashion. So there's different pots of money, different sources of funding that allow these things to be done. We're talking today primarily about a capital project, but there are other sources of money over the years, whether grants become available or other things that will allow various items off the long-term plan to be tackled as they come up. So for this project, the vote coming up in December, the basis of the project is formulated into scope from the three major buildings. Highlighted some of the main scope items at each of the buildings. Here, Parkdale first, the main work there has to do with life safety items, security cameras, clocks, PA systems, some mechanical work, and exterior door work primarily. Not a ton of work at that building, but still some very important items, especially for life safety. Here at Main Street, the same items rose to the top of the list from the priorities and from the community and from the board, being life safety items, PA systems, clocks, fire alarm system replacements here. This is where we start to see some of those programmatic elements and come into play for discussion, including this space, the media center, the library, in addition to the family and consumer sciences room, which is just down the hall. In the library here, what we're talking about is a full space renovation. We can take walls out, we can take floors out, ceilings out. This was, from a historic standpoint, the original school auditorium from nineteen sixteen. So above your heads, there is about a twenty-foot gap to the actual roof structure above that we are looking to open up as part of this project, raise the ceiling height, make the space a little bit larger. But more importantly, bring the space into the twenty-first century in terms of a library and a media center, incorporating books, incorporating technology, multimedia spaces, learning spaces, flexibility, technology, speakers, maybe microphones, other things that would function better for the district long-term. So this is an image of what's above you here. That's actually that wall. The stage used to be right behind the current reception desk, circulation desk. And actually, stage was where the hallway is at this point. We have all the old record drawings. Thankfully, we were able to find those, get to have those in a vault. They've been scanned and digitized. Those will be used during the design process to understand what we're dealing with structurally and hopefully have some impact on the design aesthetic of the space to bring back some of that original character. This is a very early concept rendering of what the space could look like. Basically, from where I'm standing, looking that way. It is early. It's a concept at this point. We have not met with the staff yet, so there may be changes in how things get laid out. But I think the intention is captured here with really changing the aesthetic of this space. Other work at the middle school involves finishing a lot of items that were started in previous projects. As you have to walk around the hallways here, and you come in, you obviously can see that the different floors weren't done the same way. Remaining bathrooms that need to be renovated for ADA compliance, elevator work, accessibility improvements. And then we get into the high school. Once again, I said it for the middle school, but I'll say it again for the high school. First items on the list are life safety. PA systems, clocks, fire alarm systems, those went to the top of the list first. And then the item that was at the center of the building condition survey from a failure item was the tennis courts. And that is failing because of where it was located. Back when it was built in nineteen sixty-four, it was put on top of an old pond. Over the years, that soil has deteriorated, or at least that is our assumption at this point, causing the subgrade to fail and repairs to be needed over the years. The plan and intention for that is to actually relocate the tennis court away from its current spot, across the loop road closer to the existing turf field, and put a new tennis court complex in that spot with lighting. What that does and impacts is it takes away a grass field. We're taking away one grass field. How do we create and offset that? So the project includes a new turf field behind it to mirror and mimic the existing turf field path, adding increased flexibility for use, more longer playing hours, longer playing seasons available for students, especially with wet grass, wet soils on the site does make it difficult in the early or late parts of the season. One thing that's important to mention is that the middle school is landlocked. So a lot of these students here, from what we understand, have to go to the high school or go to other places to play sports because there aren't fields here. So adding another turf field on this site of high school gives the district increased flexibility. Just started talking too early before I jump ones right ahead. So we asked why turf, tennis court location, the wetness of the existing fields, which is something that is an ongoing investigation. There are going to be and are already underway tests and scoping of the existing drainage on the site to really understand the full root of some of those drainage issues at the baseball fields and parking lots, even some issue that have cropped up in the building as well. That's going to be a process that's going to take two months. And when we have that information, we'll bring that information back to the Board of Education and add anything that comes up from that to the long-term plan and find a way to address it in a timely manner. So one thing that is worth mentioning regarding the overall capital project is that in the proposition, in the proposal, there is wording for work that is considered an alternate for potential additional scope. And the reason for that is to build an increased flexibility. Right now, we're in a period of truly unprecedented cost increases, variances in the construction and bidding market, availability of materials and contractors. We believe that the budget you set is adequate for everything that's in the project program. But we're hopeful that we get good bids. And we don't want to be in a spot where we don't have a plan with what to do with any leftover money. So there are items identified that could be added to the work in a second phase or a third phase of the project, even if money comes available. Those include things like salvaging the tennis courts or two of the existing tennis courts, high school bleachers, classroom renovations at Parkdale, various other parts and pieces. So there, we have the provisions built to give the district the most flexibility. So one of the questions that came up a few meetings ago was what a project like this looks like from a potential schedule standpoint. We are getting very close to December now somehow, as we're staring down a six-foot snowfall in the next couple of days. Hopefully not. We have suggested and worked with Buffalo Construction to break this out into what we can call a two-phase project. It is one project, but the work would be broken into two parts. There are reasons for that, which I'll get into in a second. What that allows us to do is target first summer of construction being the summer of two thousand and twenty-four. Obviously, any construction is pending New York State Education Department review. They can be very slow. So we'll address that if something comes up that causes a hurdle to this plan. But this plan should allow us to have construction in two summers, summer of twenty-four and summer of twenty-five to complete all of the work. And that work likely will span outside of the summer months a little bit, just to meet the nature of the work. You want to start groundwork potentially either as early as possible when the ground was for site work, or you have to wait a little bit later and it might go into September. But all of that will be done in scheduling in conjunction with the district to make sure we're having as minimal of an impact on students as possible. So two phases. The reason for that is to try to get something done sooner. I'll talk about what scope is in the two phases in a second here. But the first phase is going to address life safety elements. Cameras, the fire alarms, the clocks and PA systems, and the last area of this building and room that hasn't been replaced yet to make sure that those items are addressed sooner. Two phases, we can get some of that work designed faster than it would take to design a whole media center, than it would take to design classrooms. So to get to a good bidding window, and I understand if you think of the last capital project, there were some bids that happened later in the schedule, which caused some issues with material availability. You ideally want to be bidding construction work in late fall, around Christmas, around the holidays. We want to target that timeframe, so we work back from that. And there's no way to design all of this in one shot and have any work done in the summer of twenty-four, without all until twenty-five. So two phases, several advantages to doing it over those two parts. As I mentioned, phase one, life safety and needed maintenance, priority one across the board. And then phase two really is everything else. It'll take us longer to design those pieces. It gives us plenty of time to meet with the teachers, with the staff in the building, with the coaches, with the athletic department, and understand everything that needs to be done for those other larger design pieces. There's less that you need to work on when it comes to a roof. Relatively straightforward. So loosely on the budget, I'm going to skip through some of the conversation items from the last time relatively quickly here. There are a lot of facets to it. Rick is here. If we do want to go into any details or if there are questions regarding building aid, building aid units, maximum cost allowance, timeline for receiving building aid, I don't want to bore everyone with that information again, but if anyone does want us to stick on that, just let me know and jump back to it. Skip ahead of these. So on each of the slides for the building, we did have a total, approximate total for each building. That gets us to around twenty-two point three million dollars for the entire capital project. That's not for one of the two phases. That's for both phases, twenty-two point three million in total. And you'll notice specifically, we have that contingency line item identified there. That is part of that volatility that we're trying to account for in the overall budget. So in summary, project is built off of that building condition survey. We've grown that project from there. This project does use existing capital reserves to cover a majority of the project costs. From there, there is a need to leverage the tax impact to pay for the remaining dollars, the remaining local share for the project. But because of the alternates, because of the contingency, we are confident that the tax impact will not exceed one percent on the taxpayers locally. Future schedule, moving forward, we're at the sixteenth already here. I think the exciting part before the December vote on the fourteenth is that there'll be one more public hearing on the seventh. And the different part about that from the previous presentations is we'll be doing tours of the building, this building specifically, because this is where the majority of the work is happening inside, at least. And if there's another snowstorm, no one will want to look at the tennis courts anyway. So depending on the number of people, we'll have one or two tour groups that go through the building. But we'll look at the various spaces and be able to answer questions if anyone has them on the tour at that time. Couple of frequently asked questions that came up. Why is everything included in one proposition? There's always the ability to break a project into multiple propositions, meaning that a portion of the work would be voted on once and then something else would be voted on separately. One proposition gives the district the most financial flexibility. If you have separate propositions, you can't move the funds from one to the other. So it locks you in, it can come in under budget, that money goes to. So in one proposition, you have flexibility to save money and the roofs come in under budget. Or maybe we can just get some of that extra work in to account for things changing as we move through construction. Another question, and this stemmed from questions that came from the mailer that went out. Why apply retiring debt to offset project costs? And the real reason there has to be the financial consistency to avoid large variances. Once a project is fully paid off, the district's no longer paying interest on that. You can use some of that available sort of spot and fill that spot with potentially new fees or new costs without having something on the bottom line in terms of the overall tax, 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 tax change. And then why multiple phases? I did mention this earlier, but to reiterate, it really is to allow us to expedite work and prioritize certain things, especially those life safety elements first, without having to wait another year really before everything gets started. I went through that quickly. Said I was going to, but if I can go back to anything, let me know or if there are questions.
The, we were talking about the. And we, we talked about, okay, speak up. Talk about putting cameras down there. That's in the, that's in the process right now?
It is in process right now, yeah.
Okay, so I'm assuming the fact we're starting that before the vote, we, it's something we should be doing anyway.
To investigate it?
Yeah.
Absolutely, yes. There's the concern that, and I'm not a landscape architect. We have our specialists on our team for that. But the concerns that were presented to us over the last year was that it seems to have been worse in the last year, the water problems on the site. And to me, that's, that sounds like a pipe failed, something got blocked somewhere, something unexpected happened. Things get old, it happens. The scoping will help us understand if there is an issue like that. So it is possible, there's, the site has always been wet, so I don't want to promise that a small fix is going to fix the whole issue. But we may find something in that scoping that resolves this year being worse than years past. And that can be done potentially for a fraction of the cost of a full site project, so.
So if we're doing a capital project, it's something we really should be doing.
We would recommend it, absolutely.
The idea that we're doing it, we're spending this money prior to the vote, I guess is the concern.
Thank you. Other board members, question?
No, the only thing I would comment on that's physically available powered on the website. So if anyone wants to like really spend this money over the road, it's right there.
Open up to the floor, any community members or interested in questions?
Yes, I have a question. I understand the timing aspect. I understand the life safety aspect. But what would be the downside to delaying the project maybe six months? And going out to bid in January, February, when your labor costs and your materials costs may actually come in better, especially now that we're in a period of hyperinflation? And we still have litigation ongoing, or we did have litigation with the prior architect. Don't we need some time here?
I don't know if I'm the right person to answer if we, if we need time on it, but I can answer the escalation concerns. What we've seen historically, well, I would say my boss has seen more historically because he's a lot older than I am. But what we've seen historically in general is that when the prices go up on stuff, they may come down a little bit. But they're never going to return to a level that actually saves you money if you delay everything another year per se, push the start of construction out to twenty-five instead of twenty-four. So you may end up actually pay less in labor because it's, you might take advantage of it's quieter time. But you end up paying more because there's another five percent of steel cost escalation or cable for cameras or material costs. So it, it is a discussion.
It's a roll of the dice.
It's a roll of the dice kind of either way. But it's from, from a strictly cost standpoint, the more, the sooner you get it done in some ways or sooner you start the process, you're avoiding that long-term escalation. I had someone tell me that they're projecting fifteen percent escalation every year for the next three years, and that just terrifies me. We have the contingency for it here, but it does, it's going to impact everything across the board, whether it's construction or gas or.
I recently had a client who pulled some of their, just with Buffalo Construction. We recently had a client who pulled some of their site letting type of sports field because there was too much money at the time. But then the second phase, they wanted to recreate that. Price came up two hundred thousand dollars, just on material. You could say more money, but you could really go price with the tier part of it where it's very concerning. I think that's the only one that's possible.
Other question? Regarding the contingency, what is the typical? Obviously, we're not at typical. What is the typical percentage plus or minus that these projects end up being as far as the budget numbers?
We, we have historically hit on the budget. We usually carry about ten percent, Justin, would you say, in contingency on an average job? And there's, there's two types of contingency that are considered on our side of things. And I'm going to get too technical here, but there's a design contingency, which we hold during the design process, which is included in the numbers, not that five hundred thousand dollar line item, that we include for when we open a ceiling, are we going to find something unexpected before a contractor is on site? And then there's a construction contingency that's held for what happens when we take down a wall and there's something behind it that no one knew was there. So there's money always allocated in the original set of money for that. And I, I can't speak for where East Aurora has been, but you know, in terms of getting work done or not getting work done based off an original budget. But we pride ourselves on always being able to get all of the work done that was in the project and usually getting something a little bit extra, one of those alternate items, or having to go back to the community and ask, what else would you like to do?
So how much contingency have you built in?
The standard.
Twenty-two point.
The standard ten percent plus the five hundred thousand.
Okay. That was going to say, I'm thinking to myself, if there's only two percent.
That doesn't sound like a lot, right?
I'm just like, okay, what's going to happen when you need another million or so?
That is on top of what we would always hold.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yes, it would be plus or minus fifty dollars, yes. Yep. So that's what you see in that.
And what would happen is, is we would have to take out a piece of the project. If something terrible happened and we couldn't spend the money, we can't go spend more. Right, the budget is the budget, it becomes what are we able to accomplish? Which is why you build a budget to, to have that contingency in the buffer and then the list of add-ons, knowing that you, if you're lucky, you get to them. But if you're unlucky, you just don't get to them. That makes sense. Just from personal experience, we did sheds and at the time, the two-by-fours were four dollars. We locked in quick and within the year, they went up to six, but now they're back to four. So it may be a reasonable time. One other question, actually, I have a couple of other questions. The second phase, the middle school here, the media center. I'm not sure, it kind of went by fast, but it looked to me that the construction phase was mid-January to mid-November. How is that going to affect regular, everyday school operations?
That phase is shown at that large point. That whole timeframe may not be just for the library because we have so much other work in there. A lot of that early work, there may be spaces that you can get into over breaks. So if there's a time that we can get into and clear out and prep for work, remove ceilings from closets or hallways over holidays or over weekends, the heavy work would probably still be over the summer. Anytime we get close to a phase like that and we get into construction, that's really where Justin works his magic and the BCC team works their magic. We'll sit down probably the September of the year prior, or even the summer prior, and go through with the school administration and look at it space by space and go, okay, is there flex space? Is there a time period that makes sense? Can we take over this classroom early? Is there enough rooms in the building for the classrooms to be closed for a month or two? That room gets renovated and then the next room switches and we do it in pieces. We're not far enough into the design yet to know exactly how that works, but we do understand that it's because of the impacts, this space, the family, consumer sciences room, and the fields work as well, it's going to take more than the summer months. And we want to make sure everyone understands there will be some impact to the school. We're going to try to minimize it to as much as, as much as possible.
What about, has there been any investigation regarding any asbestos in this facility?
A little bit. There will be full formal tests done. We do know just from what we've seen and previous reports that were done in old projects, some do exist. There's pipe fittings, there's stuff above ceilings, there are some floors that are old asbestos tiles in some spaces. Totally safe until they're touched, until you break them apart. But some of that is there, and our understanding is, you know, a district policy is none of that is going to happen when there's kids in the building. So it has to be done over a break, or it has to be done over a summer, which is part of the reason we look at a calendar and go, we're showing construction for this long, but it might be a little blip here and then nothing for three months, and then a blip here and then nothing, and then heavy work over the summer.
And so you're able to guarantee mitigation of any, you know, if you, if there's any asbestos brought up into the airspace, you're able to confidently be able to mitigate.
You have to.
Safety.
Right now, by, by law, we have to.
Okay.
Any, anytime any asbestos is created, it's always, they're probably, probably that's included in the law that all asbestos work.
Okay.
To make sure that air quality are properly. To make sure that air is properly, no space can be returned because you've uncovered it out of all the gases. So we go through this, these companies to make sure.
Okay, and who is, are you acting as the general or is Buffalo, who's the general on it?
There, the general, the simplest way to answer is neither of us would be the general on it. The general contractor would be hired once the, we go out to bid. So there are the, Buffalo Construction is the construction manager, they're on-site, they'll even monitor, they help coordinate among the contractors. They run the show. Um, so, I don't know, we should call it, you're quite the closer to a general than I am.
And all, and the contracts, when we go out to bid, we'll decide what's best for the school, as far as how the job fit out. And then each one of the contractors will have their own contract, and who manages those contracts. Uh, yeah, that's, that's the word, that's the.
Okay. Um, what type of turf is at the high school? Does anybody know?
I don't know the manufacturer or what. It's a turf, okay.
Is it dual fiber monofilament or slipper?
I do not know. I know we have the records of it somewhere, but.
I couldn't find it anywhere.
You're happening all right. Who's the last person in line?
Okay, so.
There is a week.
Although it's currently, what are you proposing? What type?
Um, we have been using the equivalent, or specing out the equivalent of the, of an A-turf or a field turf, uh, with the dual filament as opposed to the monofilament, but it does change and depend on the sport that you're playing. There are different benefits if it's a multi-use field versus a baseball field. Um, our process and what will happen is we'll create the bidding and construction documents, and then we'll bring in all the major turf vendors in the area. This is as a state public works project, this has to be publicly bid for legal purposes. We can't just pick a manufacturer and go with it. It has to be competitively bid due to state finance regulations. Um, but all of the manufacturers will come in, will know, based, once I go and look through the records, will know exactly what's at the high school. And we'll have the athletic department, the coaches and the administration involved. They'll meet with these turf vendors, and in a year and a half, they'll make something totally new. You know, something totally different that's not on the market now, so we'll see the latest and greatest.
So basically, there's three out for.
There's usually, yeah.
Right, right now. I'm just curious, because they all have their benefits and their downfalls.
Yeah, there's, there's differences. We do know that the district did use, uh, virgin rubber or, or clean rubber in the last project, and that is going to be part of this, uh, guarantee, regardless of the manufacturer, regardless of the system.
Any other questions?
I have a question for the construction manager and then one for the board. Um, it seems as if there were some surprises in the last project in terms of excessive costs for change orders. And the state education department recommends that there's a pre-construction meeting where all of the contractors, uh, are reviewing the plans and the design drawings before construction even begins, so that those surprises don't occur. Will that be done in this upcoming project?
Yeah, so that, and that's going to be part of what, uh, Steve was talking about with this building position server, and this team already had to build. A lot of issues that previous project was coordination on the, on the design side, not coordinated with some consultants on the design. So when the contractor, we did have those meetings last phase, and that's when we found out that the designs were multiple. Um, but the building position server that's, that's already opened up a lot of these spaces that are part of the project to start that process. And then, yes, of course, once the construction started, we had those.
Very good.
And a question for the board. Um, I didn't see any change orders approved by the board for the last capital project. Will change orders be approved moving forward?
We have some exceptions, and I don't recall them off the top of my head, but they will need to be approved by the board at a certain point.
Uh, thirty-five thousand dollars so that we're assured that any work above that amount goes out to bid?
Yes, I, I wouldn't have signed the, the last time around, it wasn't on my watch, so, um, we're going to do the things that were required to do.
Good, absolutely, thank you.
Other question? It wasn't done that way last time, so we'll look into that.
Uh, just a quick comment and, uh, and, and then a question. First of all, congratulations, the, the level of detail and depth in this is, is, uh, is impressive. I've put together, you know, bids and projects of my world, uh, before, and this is really, you know, incredible. Thank you, guys. And also, I want to applaud the, the board and I guess all of you. When you look at these improvements, they just sort of seem appropriate. I don't see the large S. I don't see, you know, the, you know, waste or anything. It just seems like really good, solid, uh, projects for our, for our kids. Um, and to create a really great, you know, great set of schools for us. The other thing I want to comment on, and I think I have this right, that that one percent, which seems to be kind of, which would be the tax burden, uh, potential, seems to, am I correct that, that's sort of like above something we probably approved ten or fifteen years ago? And, um, would it be the equivalent of if we all approved like, I think, three dollars for eggs in two thousand and seven, now it's going to be three dollars and three cents for eggs for the next fifteen years? Why?
True.
Okay.
I don't know if the numbers are exactly right, but the concept is. Concept is a hundred percent.
I don't know how much eggs were fifteen years ago, but, but that's like, that's incredible. Uh, it's, I, 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 I don't know, there's no question here unless my numbers were wrong, but that's just sort of incredible that you could come up with a whole new set of projects, a whole new set of improvements and all. Fifteen years later, for essentially the same amount and potentially a little bit less. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I guess that's the timing of the project. So it's, you work with all the, essentially, consultants. Speaking of financial side of it, and how we minimize the impact. So if that is being paid off, this is your, your office sponsors that closely, and I'll say, if this is the timing, the debt, this is when a new project should come up, in order to try to maintain that, that, um, evenness in the, uh, impact on, on the tax side. This is what we know within this space, on the timing of this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I'd question the reason for carrying the ceiling out and opening an area that a previous school board said should be closed. Is there something up there that's really in need of being opened?
Encourage you to come back on December seventh and see for yourself. I think the ceilings are going to be partially down for that. Um, I don't know what board made the decision. Very often, we see that, um, in schools across the country, and especially in this area, um, there's not money to properly renovate old plaster ceilings or hard ceilings and to run new electric and ductwork and other things, the easy solution in the seventies and eighties was to put in a drop ceiling. Lowering the ceilings, a lot of old schools had ten, twelve-foot high ceilings, double-height windows, and then you drive by a building in the upper portion of the windows is a metal panel. That's because they dropped the ceiling at some point.
I understand that.
So the, the space here likely is the same reason. It might have been a budgetary reason. Someone didn't want to repair a crack in plaster, they didn't want to deal with old broken lights, and they put in a drop ceiling, and it's been that way ever since. But there are, there are architectural details up there. Um, the space and height does allow us to do different things with book stacks, with storage spaces, with display boards, potentially with monitors, so that you can have a monitor higher up that's larger, so that it's going to be more of a lecture space or something potentially as a flexible use. None of those designs obviously are finalized yet, but I know the ceiling is going to be open on December seventh, so you can see what's up there for, for yourself.
What's the heating situation going to be with the upper space?
We have to design it. That's going to be a challenge for us.
Which means there's a possibility you're going back to work on the boilers again.
No, I, not necessarily.
Are they going to have to handle additional winter conditions up there?
There's usually, there's usually more than enough capacity in the systems from a contingency standpoint to heat various spaces. We're also going to have a completely different room configuration. Um, so the units in this space specifically are going to have to be reworked. Um, you know, whether that's, because that office may not be there, that space may not be there, but these offices may be over at this time. So the square footage, the volume of air is going to be totally different. It'll be new ductwork, that's for sure. I, 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 the boilers, no. You know, if these existing boilers are new, they're going to be reused.
Other questions or comments?
I'll ask another one then. When this area is reworked for workstations for students, how many students will be able to be working in here at one time?
I don't know that answer yet. Um, the biggest challenge with any media center usually comes to any library space. Usually comes down to acoustics and privacy. You know, if you have two teaching groups or two zones in one space, have enough separation or have enough acoustic differentials so that one teacher isn't being overspoken by another teacher in a space, or three or four groups of students can work and not be disturbed. All of that's going to come into the design, and without knowing where the bookcases are going to go, I can't speculate on exactly how many will be in here.
As Steve said earlier, that one of the next phases after the project is approved, then when the, in the, when they're in the design phase, there's a lot of conversation with the stakeholders in the building to make sure that space is workable for everyone. The greatest and most important thing is that this is a space that is workable and inspiring for our kids, teachers and community. The kids deserve to have an incredible experience in their school, and the media center and library is a key part of that. Um, this will, this will give the kids an amazing opportunity to interact with each other and learning and enter the modern age where we are sorely behind in this. I think Kenton did this sort of project twenty-five years ago or four. They're probably already on the renovation, and that's just one example. We're, we're really, really behind in this area in giving the kids what they deserve in terms of a learning experience. So the stakeholder will come in and get to weigh in on what this, what this looks like. What are they, what are they learning about when they're at conferences and reading and doing professional development? What opportunity are our children currently not getting and how will they best be served? That will come up in the, in the exploration and design phase, the actual nuts and bolts of how many people can fit in the room at the time and where are they sitting? That comes out of those conversations.
Well, that's, that's the right reason I asked the question, because of volume, the number of students we have here in the school. Seems like a small area like this will not be able to handle the constant flow.
We've got some incredibly creative administrators that know how to move kids through a building like nobody's business. Any other questions or comments? Thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you again. Thank you on the seventh. We are moving on to item five, item requiring board action. Moving on to item six.
Uh, especially they, there's each year, one day to recognize the forty days reason, and it is that day. So we wanted to just, I'll begin by thanking you, uh, for your dedicated service, for all the time and energy that you put in to, um, doing the great work that we have our students and staff. And so today, Mr. Roberts is going to kind of be, uh, the presentation, so I'll turn it over to him and, and his students.
We, we got it going. Tonight, I'd like to say thank you on behalf of faculty, staff, administration, parents and students raised for our high school, and our friends at Parkdale and the school. We wanted to recognize you tonight for consistently putting the needs of students and their success forefront of every decision you made. In recent years, you faced difficult decisions, global events, and you've dealt with things that you would never have anticipated to be designed for. But through it all, you've continued to support, to maintain and enhance the educational experience for our students. You've supported initiatives, innovative programs that excite our students and also provide platforms for future careers. Your good judgment, your fairness, your tireless work have been valuable assets for our district's success. Your accomplishments and the many beneficial changes that you have implemented should give you a feeling of pride and achievement. It is said that serving as a school board member is one of the finest examples of service to one's community. With that said, on behalf of all of us here tonight, and the thousands of students, teachers, staff, parents of this wonderful district, we thank you for your dedicated public service. And as we've done in the past, during your recognition ceremony, we want to provide you with a little entertainment. And I apologize actually to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you for that great performance, and I appreciate your patience.
And if you want to hear more of them, they'll be playing in December as well.
So, obviously, our position wanted to express their great engagement with some other groups that want to say thank you as well. So, uh, one of those initiatives that you supported, broadcasting, so, so the terminals were broadcasting last. Put together, um, a thank you piece, three, and Miss Galski is going to, uh, see.
Yeah, we're going to read a bit so we can make sure you get all of it. The kids underestimated how good. The students and staff of EAHS have persevered through a lot within the last few years. But with help from the Board of Education, we were all able to bounce back. With new programs being created even as we speak.
Our kids.
Here we take one hundred and thirty-eight. You guys better get it right this time. Action.
Thank you.
Cut, that's a wrap.
Such a deep thank you for some, some of those programs that I mentioned earlier.
You're not going to say. You're supposed to say, thank you, V O E, and I was waiting for a one, two, three queue, and you were, I guess, supposed to jump right in and just say it. And they, of course, added that.
Everybody looks for the out.
So in front of you is, is, again, is the, uh, a token of appreciation, um, from, uh, from Parkdale High School and the high school to say thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And that was, I think, I was tall.
Are they still double design?
Yes, they are. That design is enough, so.
That is awesome. That, thank you. They're great. Thank you.
Thank you.
The reminder of why we're doing what we do. Not just this way. Sure, I'm saying we don't. All right, he's come up to the, uh, board presidents and board member comments. Uh, the policy committee met, and we're going to be having some policies to approve for work and secretary. Thank you for the ready and for the team, uh, let's get into it. Four of, uh, the board members and the superintendent got to attend the NISPA convention in Syracuse. Uh, two weeks, I don't know, some, some, sometime, it wasn't yesterday. Uh, and we will make a plan to meet, um, a small group and then sort out how to share ideas. It was a fantastic opportunity to, um, get back together and do some development for board members. Um, and I know I learned a lot, and I believe everyone else did too, and we have loads to share. Uh, yes, first of all, I want to start by thanking our high school for.
Uh, yes, first of all, I want to start by thanking our high school for our board of education a few weeks ago. You're all extremely impressed with not only the broadcasting room equipment that you have to the tech support center, all the way to the Blue Devils design. That was just absolutely amazing, vivid. And thank you very much for all of these. You said last time from our favorite days of the year, looking forward to the new business school. So thank you. Um, I attended the safety meeting on October twentieth. This year we have a new community member, Javora Brack. So he was there for our first meeting. Officer Cartwright is researching the use of the green tags in the classroom. If you remember, it shows, the green tag shows if a room is occupied or not. And he's trying to see if this is something we still should be doing in our schools. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong with the pronunciation, Ultras? Ulteris, the company that is looking at our safety plan is going to be meeting with our principals and administrators and then giving us all recommendations. The tech department is conducting weekly fist drills just to make sure that the faculty, staff receive emails that do not send emails that are ones that they should not be. And we currently now have a million dollar insurance for the staff. Parkdale and Middle School are collaborating on giving patient ideas, both of which have already been conducted this year. The high school started the ten second drills again between these pre-COVID, they started those up again. Um, and they are going to also be doing an active shooter drill only for adults, only for adults in high school. Um, all classrooms in the destructive air purifiers in them. And COVID safety update has been given to all faculty and students as a reminder as to ways to make sure that they are staying safe. And based on the recent event that happened at the middle school with the false alarm, that was discussed at my safety meeting. So the middle school is also starting the second, the seventeen second lockdowns as well. Um, and as a result of the, of the fire alarm, all administrators have been given megaphones in case of an emergency. And additional radios have been ordered for the staff, which they now have. And they're also working on training more teachers through the epidemic and diabetic training. And then I also attended the district parent council meeting on the twenty-sixth with Mrs. Scannion and Mrs. Shota. And two things that I want to mention, as you know, the potatoes are giving out grants, fundraising, having membership drives. But they're currently working on a new website that all three PTOs are going to have. And then one website for all three, for all three PTOs, and that's being created. And insurance has been purchased for all three PTOs. It will, it will cover all investments. I guess that's not something they've ever had in the past, so it's something they should have had. So now all three PTOs will be insured. And also I attended the parent series on Monday night for substance abuse. Um, and it was another great experience as a parent. The names of the drugs and the drugs that are out there and the ways where that the kids are committing drugs continuously changes. And it's just mind blowing to me as a parent, um, what is out there and the access they have to that. So you really look far out of that. So.
Thank you so much. Same attended the PD meeting with you as well. I feel good to add that. Um, I was at the middle school car concert. That was pretty exciting to see a full concert and see the size of the fifth and sixth grade. Especially now that it is not mandatory, but it was a very large group. So that was a really nice kind of back to normal type thing to see. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I think everything's uncovered.
Totally covered. Sorry about that.
I'm good with that.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes, Mr. Brunson and I and the other committee met on the November first. We had a review with the internal auditor, there was a assessment report out of June thirty, thousand twenty-two. Report included prior year recommendations and current year internal controls in areas of purchasing, expenditures, which included payroll, personnel, travel and conferences, and then student related data. Um, that included attendance, reliability, and student performance. Those areas submitted on the board received in fact last month. Discussion around a prior year recommendation focused mainly on the district's information technology disaster, disaster recovery. The Board of Education well aware of that, can prove that. Focus on the risk assessment report for twenty-two, twenty-three will be on student services, including transportation, food service, and accounting reporting in areas of state aid, COVID relief plans. That's all I have about that. I won't present part of it.
Anything else? Thank you for, since you attended the Parkdale PTO.
I did. I've always liked doing stuff like that when I'm in a position. I could go on air, have a hundred thousand, a million people watching. Yes, it's just a great drill. I like doing stuff like that.
Thank you for taking the time.
Yes, uh, since the last board meeting, the Eastern Educational Foundation had its board meeting. At the high school this time to, uh, to learn about particularly brand application from the I C S rocket club. And, uh, the board decided to grant the, the request for approximately sixteen thousand dollars, which will enable them to build this six or seven foot tall rocket that they're going to be, they're going to be launching in Alabama, Huntsville. Yeah, so they, they're going to travel down there with their rocket after they build it. We're really proud of these young people. And I'm particularly impressed by the fact that the grant proposal, similar to the one from the Blue Devil Design Group, uh, was presented entirely by students and, uh, and very capably done as well. So, uh, we're, we're proud to support the efforts in these student led organizations. I particularly, uh, I particularly want to congratulate the faculty members who, uh, who are. But by they, they had, they, it's really easy, having been a faculty member myself, to just take charge of things, you know? But, but to, to have the evidence to be able to build the teacher capacity in students is tremendous, tremendous advantage. And so congratulations to the people working with both those stories.
Yeah, let's thank the foundation, Mr. Brunson, for, for the grant. This was something that the students earned because they qualified the national level. And so it was a project that we were on to value with. Uh, but they do get to work with NASA engineers. And, and as opposed to my understanding is as opposed to competing against other teams that brought up to this point, we're actually going to be working with other teams, students from across the country, working with NASA engineers to build this rocket.
That's right. And that's, uh, yeah.
Once and once in a while. Thank you for supporting.
Please, please. You gotta start something.
Now, it's been a very busy month, but I think you've all covered all the things I would add. So, but thank you very much. Moving on to administrator comments, if you have anything to share.
We can start at Parkdale.
Sure. Yeah, excellent conceptual book fair, a very well attended family night. First, uh, time we had our family night for a slather book fair. Went very well and we picked off our character strong trade of the month gratitude with a wonderful assembly for our veterans at, uh, uh, welcome to veterans to the school. Had our fourth graders, he's an amazing assembly. Um, and that went really well. I know we're going to talk about, quickly, our next event, which is our Turkey Trot. Yeah, next Tuesday, we have our fourth annual Turkey Trot, which is a three quarter of a mile fun run and walk for our second through fourth grade students. Um, our PE teachers take over this event and really make it shine. Um, we're going to host it raining snow, but hopefully shining. Um, and you know, it's a great way to kick off a long weekend of all the Thanksgiving food that everyone's going to be eating and indulging in. So we're really looking forward to that for our students and to have day for them so they'll be able to run, get some energy out and then head out for a long weekend.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Who else this evening? Mr. Brown?
So last Tuesday, we had a pretty exciting day. We had some Buffalo Bills players come to the school. So I'd like to thank Austin Dodge. Austin is our new technology teacher. He's phenomenal. And he found a contest through Austin Air Purification System. And Austin Air is the, the company that we developed their air purifiers in our classrooms. So it was through that company and we won this contest. So DJ Bill, who is the Bills DJ, he's awesome. Um, came with Billy the Buffalo and then Tyrell Dodson and Kent Lewis, two of the players came. And they talked about the importance of having clean air and good respiratory health. And then it was really cool because the players did a question and answer with the students and talk all about being, uh, you know, Josh Allen's teammate and what it's like. And it was really cool. The, the questions that the students asked were absolutely, it's all were hilarious. Um, and the, the, the players just were phenomenal, who in the crazy advanced to like this and. So it was a, uh, the event that I think the students will never forget. And then also we'd just like to mention, we're excited that field trips are kind of back in action. Uh, we had a survival designed, a field trip at downtown Buffalo, a biking field trip where we had eighteen eight theaters go. And they biked the city of Buffalo, learning a bunch of different architectures and actually the history of the chicken. And so they got to eat chicken wings on a little tour and that was on a Saturday. And then this Friday, which may not happen, um, we have fifty of our LEAP students who are in the LEAP program still to go to Rochester for a huge Maker Fair event. It's really going to be incredible that they're probably not going to get to go to. Um, but we are already in the midst of trying to come up with some other opportunities for them, maybe one in Tampa. So it's just nice to, to have the students traveling and experience as well.
Thank you. It's great to hear. Who else this evening?
Mr. Brown. What else? Uh, so just briefly, want to update the board on the development, uh, on the development for the high school course catalog. Uh, so we're working with teachers, Jeff Shawley, Ethan Hansen, and Rob and Austrian. And we're moving forward with our clients to propose the addition of an agriculture program to our course catalog, hopefully in February. Uh, Ethan Hansen and I have toured agricultural schools across Western New York last spring and, um, and this fall. And as a local school committee, we're starting to develop a focus and build relationships and, and supports to help us develop this program. So we're in the development stages. Uh, and, uh, the, the plan as of right now is that we're looking to have a regenerative farming experience on the high school property. So this program, we think, ties together our students and our community's interest in sustainability that you're aware of. Composting, farm to table, and environmentally friendly practices. So the reason I wanted to tell you this tonight is because we're going to start to build a steering committee to further develop this program. And we're going to tap into our East Shore High School students, alums, teachers, and community members to assist and, and guide this development. So just wanted to ensure the last thing before, uh, before we.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're very excited. Uh, Mr. Hansen did a presentation for our adult wellness. Talked about, um, like how you can locally source your food, um, because that's what he does. So we shared that process with our staff. Uh, I happened to attend, um, his presentation and I talked to him about it afterwards, about bringing it to our students. And so, um, student, uh, student advisors, uh, one of their focuses for last year was food service. And so he came down and spoke to them about the work we're about moving this forward. Uh, and that's what we did. Of course, capable, and so I'm really excited that basically taking hold and moving forward, forward to hopefully getting started and follow. Twenty-three. So, you know, that would be like, we talked about a greenhouse, I don't know if you shared that or about melting the greenhouse, that P S might be is around that to, to move that process forward and to kind of simplify it, uh, and minimize the impact. But, uh, some, some really good things. Uh, yeah, so it's very, it's very exciting. And I think we have a number of kids who are really interested in having those food choices and also the environmental impact choice, but in what. Hopefully a very, um, interesting topic.
Thanks for the reference. Thank you. Who else this evening? Mr. Carter?
Good evening. How you doing?
All right. How are you doing?
Good. Um, I'm going to talk, obviously, on athletics. And I want, we had probably one of the most successful competitive aspects you could have from a fall. And we'll talk about that a little bit. A lot of, we do pride ourselves on kind of the scholar athlete, who we are as student athletes. A lot of those awards, the Western Europe Scholar Athlete Awards are still kind of in the process, the New York State Scholar Athlete Team. So we'll have an update on that aspect of it, probably in a future meeting. So we'll talk about this year competitively on the field. We have twelve bar city sports, eleven of which are competitive in the fall. One is, is cheerleading, their competitive season is coming up. So of the eleven competitive teams, eight of them won their division title. I think that kind of speaks for the process we have and support we have, um, across, across the board. Boys' golf on the ECIC, small school and Coach Holgland and what he does with that group. And every year it seems like they're beating everybody by about forty shots in a, in a match. Um, and just kind of tremendous season for them, another undefeated season for them. Boys and girls cross country, we're going to touch on them. I'll probably just let a little bit more, a little bit. Boys and girls soccer. I can't speak enough about those two programs right now. Um, boy soccer, our division title, they lost one of the most competitive soccer games I've ever seen in my life in that section final from the board. And went through some adversity early in that game that you kind of wondered how they would and Coach Beal kind of kept the guys and they recover and they picked each other up and played really what I thought was a fascinating game and just high level, high energy, been around soccer a lot of my life and it really was just a fun game to watch. The girls soccer team historically has won everything. Started the season one and two in the division. And you're kind of like, I wonder how things are going to go here. I want to see. We started captains meetings, the respect those girls have for Coach Paulson. It's no wonder that they lost to your boy Pioneer early. And they turned around, they beat both those teams a second time, they split the division title. And they played your boy and they beat him five to one in the, in the playoff round, in the semifinals. Again, tells you kind of how they kept going forward and that development of that team. Girls swimming, that is the division champion. We'll talk about that in a little bit. Girls tennis, we're going to talk about that in a little bit. Boys volleyball as well, won their second straight division title. Section six champions, we had one individual champion, Owen Wrong, boys cross country. Cross country while not taking second place in the C two, Owen won the individual title. Um, I was at that race that day and just kind of ran what I would view as almost a perfect race. How he kind of went through that and all the different areas of that, obviously. Muculakas have done a great job with their teams forever. Um, and then kind of coached them through that race and, and what they did. Girls cross country won the section title. Uh, we're talking about them in just a little bit again. Girls swimming, once again, just continue that realm of we are the smallest school in class. We had talked, talked with coaches before that and said, hey, how do you think? He's like, I don't know. He's like, we're up with Williams Leaks and Hammer. It's some of these larger schools that normally have a break we haven't been in with. And they simply just went in and won the section title by sixty points. So another very successful year, they have Jessica Drosowski will be competing this weekend in the state meet in Rochester. The hundred fly and the hundred, um, and the hundred butterfly, the hundred fly. Girls tennis, won the section title again, this team title started last year. There, there have been two section six champions. They are the two. They went to the far west region, lost four to one, but really were in third sets and either one of those could have flipped and kind of flipped that match. Um, so really they had a tremendous season, Coach Thorland and what he does. It's been kind of a model, I think, for East Shore Athletics all the way through. Boys volleyball won their first section title since nineteen fifty-two. However, we're looking at the future of our coach as they had a two-one lead in the regional final and managed to lose it. So we're looking at the future of, of that. Our, our state champions, uh, girls cross country winning their, their, Sam Noonan's captain of that team and has a tremendous races there. But she has that one three state titles and lost here in COVID. So just that area tells you how successful they've been. Everybody in the room knows. We will be honoring them in, I believe, the December program. We will bring that team in here as they want to send them again. So, um, that's kind of the fall season of athletics, and we have more updates after the winter. I'll be back.
I, I think you should recognize the work that I've done, not, not only as, as an athletic director, but juggling the volleyball program as well, for those of you that have been around. As long as I have, the volleyball program was potentially been on the chopping block. For those of you that have been around, as long as I have, the volleyball program was potentially been on the chopping block back in the day. And Brian has turned it around. He's made it type of model teams. It is the model volleyball program with Western New York. Even looking to some of the teams competing against the Williams Johnson Hampers. His volleyball team is the best volleyball team in Western New York. AB Joe's, Tichus, AgroTrumart, and Ethan Eastwood. So his leadership, his, his work with, with the team as a role model for his athletes is, is something that is worthy of all the recognition that we give him. Because it's, it's been truly, it just inspired the launch, so.
Can I just answer that? You can take a separate note after the meeting. Thank you. We're going to move on.
No, he also was coach of the year in volleyball. Just that's just.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Any other administrators? Thank you so much. All right, we are moving on to community comments. We're trying something new tonight. I do not have any comment cards. Do we do comment cards? Hold on, please, please hold for audible read, I feel apparently I am supposed to read the deal every time. Excuse me, I know the deal. District residents who wish to speak during visitor comment portion of the Board of Education meeting would complete the visitor comments card and deposit it in visitor comment box located at the sign in sheet at the entrance of the room. The cards are numbered, thank you, don't watch, read them in order. Comment period is not intended to be a discussion. We did have our Q and A for the facilities project and it was fantastic and thank you for participating. This portion is for comments only, not question and answer. Each speaker is given three minutes. And the speakers who have prepared written comments are encouraged to submit them in advance to the board at boe@eak12.org at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. The board does read all comments that are submitted to that email address. And we thank folks for taking the time to send comments by that method because those group, not everyone can attend a meeting, so those comments are always welcome. We did receive comments from Colleen Unst regarding lacrosse. Two emails from Colleen Unst regarding lacrosse teams. From Melinda Hume regarding indoor trap. From Shelley Forello regarding the building condition survey. From Tracy Gillespie about the AFS program. Caitlin Paul regarding the smart awareness program. Jim Wu regarding the accessibility to the high school locker room. Ken Settles, two emails, one from November seventy-third. I think that's one. Ken Settles and the Western New York Education Alliance, who all received your email. Thank you very much.
Did we respond appropriately?
Where was appropriate? Yes, yes, we did follow up where. So we have added a table to the mix. Wonderful. Please, please join us at the table. Thank you.
So this is the something new.
This is the something new. This is board development.
Let me add my thanks to the board members for your service and the time that you put in and the work that you do. We now know with certainty that student achievement and mental health suffered because of mandates over the past two years. Decisions on masks and lockdowns that were touted as protective for children actually hurt them. Too often, parents who express their fears and warned these outcomes were brushed aside and treated as if they were any of these radical partners. Moving forward, I do hope that the board and the superintendent are focused, laser focused, are asking teachers and administrators how students are progressing and closing the achievement gap due to policies during COVID. I hope board meetings include regular updates. Or have some time examining school assessments, exemplars, and teacher findings. Please don't diminish or deny this learning loss. While state testing is an imperfect measure, the results used to be recorded to the board each October. I was sort of hoping we'd make it every court tonight. But even prior to COVID, there was some erosion in our performance relative to regional schools since twenty twelve, especially in MAP, middle school MAP. This year's results released by Buffalo Hooms shall continue to be outperformed by five other regional districts in middle school MAP and nine other districts in elementary MAP. And I think this is worthy of some attention. I certainly hope that if the state is unwise in imposing mandates at a time when learning loss should be our top priority, that the superintendent and board remember your obligation to advocate for students and actively listen to any parents' concerns moving forward.
And you have. We do regularly discuss with the superintendent and the administrators the progress of our schools. That is part of our job and we do it regularly, so please feel free to stay tuned. On where we are in the cycle for reporting, I'm not sure. But we do talk about progress in all things, including budget development. There were changes made to the middle school schedule and curriculum specifically to address the back gap. So we're on it. Good. Thank you. Any other comments this evening? Okay, moving on. Thank you. Yeah.
Starting the two emails we received, letting teaching freedom. I would appreciate an update from our people sometime in the future, or maybe with regard to our tape on curriculum updates.
Thank you for the request. We'll put it on the agenda. Other comments? Right, we're moving on to item ten, reports and discussion items. It is the people services program.
So I've combined the people services report with the enrollment report, so it's all in one presentation. And I'm not going to sleep. So Erin Chambers and I co-talked math at the high school for nine years. And we always used to talk about how great it would be if we could COVID mess her. So now that she's been working in people services department the past year as a teacher on special assignment, we do that. And a lot of what I'm presenting today are things that she's worked on, so I just thought it was fitting that she joined me. Thanks for having me.
All right, so question of the day, what exactly is people services? If you would have asked classroom teacher, me, I probably wouldn't have just said, oh, it's special education. But I've learned a lot in the past year and a half. Of course, yes, it encompasses special education services, not just for our school age students, but our preschool students as well as my five oh four students. But we also provide AIS services, E and L services, homeschool services, oversee other related services, OT, PG, speech, support services related to counseling, social work, and also homebound hospital instruction for our students who are unable to. But that's not all. We also oversee the UPK registration, the lottery is all done through our office. State reporting on specialized data, I'll kind of touch on that a little bit later in our presentation. And we work really closely with the business office and state federal grant management. Rare, our office is the one that completes all those applications with Julian's help. Other financial management aspects of special ed, like Medicaid billing, high cost student stacking, as well as billing other school districts or those non-residents who attend private schools that are local. Region. And then we also do the civil rights data collection and reporting for that.
And I'm sure there are things that aren't on here that we forgot, but that was enough. So now let's talk a little bit about people services. Pre-pandemic, NISAD had come out with what they called the blueprint for improved results for special education. It came around the same time as the next generation learning standards. But we all know when pandemic hit, things sort of got put on hold. But now that we're post-pandemic, this is something that's coming to the forefront again in special education. So if you're not familiar with the blueprint for improved results for students with disabilities, there are really seven core principles that it addresses. And it's all geared towards improvement, improving the results for our students. The core principles, I have my cheat sheet here. I'll just go through them quickly. But the core principles are self-advocacy and goal setting with our students. Parent and family engagement, multi-tiered systems of academic and behavioral support. Research, research-based teaching and learning strategies. Career development and work-based learning, specially-designed instruction, and inclusive programs for our students. So how does the state make sure that we are following the blueprint and the guidelines that they put out? We have what they call a state performance plan and the annual performance report. So I'm not going to get into the details of it, but there are many indicators that they collect data on and that we have to provide. So we'll talk about special ed reporting that we do. These are the seventeen state performance plan indicators. Some of this is data that we just upload, some of this is reports. Some of, there are a few of them that are only recorded on a six-year cycle, so once every six years. And some of them are recorded on annually.
So we're just going to touch on two of the indicators that we had to report on. I believe it was the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Indicator thirteen, and again, I won't read through all of this, relates to secondary transition. So we're looking at our students with disabilities who are fifteen or older. Do their IEPs contain the appropriate post-secondary goals and measurable goals for them? So you can see that when we reported in twenty twenty-one, we reviewed thirty of our students' IEPs and we were then one hundred percent compliant.
So when we talk about the, one of the inclusive programs and activities, one way of measuring that is looking at the least restrictive environment. So that's what LRE is, and that's indicator five. So this is something that is reported on annually. And the data for this slide actually comes from state ed's website and that's our school report card. So the last school report card data that has been on the state ed website is from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. They're a little bit behind in their reporting, even though we send the data every year. And so looking at what they call our least restrictive environment, they set goals for us. So the state target for students to be inside the Gen Ed classroom eighty percent or more of the time. The state target is rate of entry equal to sixty percent. So it's reported in these age bands. So you can see in the five to eleven age band, we're at forty-four percent, so not quite at that target. In the twelve, thirteen age band, we beat the target sixty-five percent. And for fourteen through twenty-one, for our high school students, again, even higher, we're still exceeding that target. And then they don't have targets for every one of these percentages. But the eighty percent or more is really, the state target is sixty percent. And that's really where we're striving to be. So.
Is that something that it's like a long-term process for you to get to that sixty percent? Or how quickly to get into that target are you looking at?
Well, the target's always a moving target because it used to be in the fifties, but the state sort of ups it every year, sort of like growth scores and things like that. If you look at our combined, we're closer to it, we're in the like fifty percent. So they really look at the combined, but they do break it out by age band. So some of the things we're going to talk about in the next slide are some of the things that, when you hear us talk about our co-teaching training and we talk about our inclusive classrooms, those are the things that we're doing to address that. And that's why those things are important.
Sandy, do we know where we were? Nineteen, twenty?
Yep, and I think actually, I don't know right now. Like I can't think of that number, but I have looked at that and we have been steadily improving. Not going to be going up, but like I said, the state raised that target a little bit also, but we are getting much closer. And I wish we had the data because last year we started with, you know, bringing some students back. This year we started with going to the classrooms at Parkdale. So I'm definitely expecting that to go up.
We haven't had to formally report results for this school year yet, but preliminarily we've looked at it and that number is going up too. So part of the reason that number is, oh, go ahead.
Oh, so I just love the slide because it really talks a lot about, it says one in twenty children have, and this isn't our data. This is just something that we came across. One in twenty children have a disability that gives nineteen kids a daily opportunity to learn about diversity, collaboration, inclusion, and friendship. So that's why it's important. I think I need that on my wall. Just to remind everybody who wants to know that.
So a few initiatives that we've done to kind of move that percentage forward is this year at Parkdale, we do have fully integrated co-teaching classrooms at kindergarten, first grade, and third grade. So we have a specialized teacher working with a Gen Ed teacher with the same population of students all day long. Having pulled out for reading or math throughout the day. We now have an eight-one-one classroom in all three buildings, Parkdale, all of it, the high school. So we're super proud about that.
And one of the things I just want to add about that, that is exciting, even though it's still an eight-one-one classroom and the students are in a separate classroom, it gives us so many more opportunities to include those students. And not just the things that, like the summaries and things like that, but I know at Parkdale, Ms. Muller's class, we have two students that are now in a Gen Ed math class that are doing phenomenal. So it gives us just those opportunities to start continuing to move them to that least restrictive environment.
So just to kind of provide support to our teachers with those new models. We had wonderful co-teaching training over the summer. There were two opportunities where we had Susan Hess come in and conduct workshops where Gen Ed teachers and specialized teachers, the pairs were there working together to plan for the upcoming year. Along with that throughout the year, and actually I think we were just on the phone with her before our meeting. Susan's going to come back and do another presentation for our co-teachers in January, as well as provide some personalized coaching for them as well. With the new programming, we do have more new teachers as well. We have some teachers out on maternity leave. So one of the other initiatives we've started is really providing specialized training for our new special education teachers. And we're fortunate enough to have retired teachers, Jackie, Anna, Ben, and Nancy Goshaw, conduct those trainings for us. So we're not getting generic teaching, we're getting used to our special education teacher training, which has been really valuable to them. Not to leave out preschool, we've talked about inclusive classrooms for our school age children. But as you know, we have four of our preschool classrooms all being operated at Parkdale this year. Right before the beginning of this school year, we got approval from NISAD to operate a fully integrated preschool class. So one of those four classrooms is fully integrated, running smoothly so far. In addition to that, for this school year, we have approval from Erie County where we can provide related services such as speech, OT, and PT to our preschool age kids for reimbursement. And other things that have happened last year and this year, just in terms of social emotional supports. We have a social worker at Parkdale now. We have a behavior specialist that's district wide. And I know the family support center has something wrong. I know Mr. Coleman has given you guys a presentation about the family support center, so we'll go into detail about that.
So future plans, where are we going? Unified has really taken off. I, I know I've seen all of you at unified basketball games last year and we're supposed to be moving forward with unified bowling. But even beyond that, even beyond just the sports, every single building is so excited about unified. They're just coming together and forming like unofficial unified clubs, there's been fundraisers. And it's amazing to see everything that they're doing. And I know at the high school, and we've probably said this before, at the unified meeting at the beginning of the year, it was like standing room only, they had to move to a bigger room because they had so many students that wanted to be involved. Oregon Gillingham Training and Certification, we're working on getting teachers in both Parkdale and the middle school trained in the Oregon Gillingham model of teaching reading. And that's more for like a tier three intervention for reading instruction. Crisis prevention intervention training, PLC for specialized teachers and co-teachers. This actually came from teachers themselves who have been through the co-teaching training and thought it would be a great idea to have a teacher-run professional learning community just to support each other in the co-teaching. And then the federal grant coordination with our, all the reporting that's going on with that. I think that's an ongoing process and they just keep adding more and more onto it now they're doing targeted reviews and things like that. So just, that's something to keep in mind as we move forward. Take a lot of care of time. And so the traditional people services report had a lot of information in it on, you know, classification of five oh fours and non-public students. So you all did still receive that report. Are there any questions? Are there any questions on any of that information that you have provided?
Just quickly, I noticed on the Bible fours, an increase in the last two school years. Is that, is that attributed to something specific?
Um, possibly COVID. What I'm hearing is that it's not just East Aurora, that it's more doctors recommending, parents demanding, and sort of like a post-COVID type thing. But I'm not quite sure, it sounds like I have data to prove that, but. Yes, I'm hearing it from like my CF group where other districts are talking about the same thing. But yes, we did see that. Um, and then, as I said, we just combined student enrollment with report. So you did get the student enrollment report also. Um, and if you look at our enrollment, this is historical, twenty-two thousand thirty-two students, nineteen fifty-two, last year was nineteen oh-one. And this year on Fed's Day, which is that snapshot day in October, because enrollment is always fluctuating, um, it, it, we are at one thousand eight hundred ninety-two.
So pre-K enrollment isn't included?
No, because that's our, an artificial number, and that's sort of.
It's an artificial number?
Well, because it's, I, the artificial number, I'm sorry, it's sort of like, it's capped. So UPK is not included in there because we haven't included it in there, but it's only what we're allowed to have. So like this year, we only have seventy-two students. Does that make sense? So what?
Yeah, but it does. I was seeing a lot of lines of, uh, like State Aid Foundation, they, they factor in enrollment and enrollment increases. Those numbers won't be included in.
Um, so we report our, so we report our UPK in SERES, and those are all. Oh, I heard this very sorry. Um, we report those numbers in SERES and all of those numbers get included, but it's not included in this.
That's really helpful one word. We do have seventy-two more students in our school.
It's a help our aid, that's, it's counted, I think.
Well, it is counted, it's reported, so yes, it's reported to the state, those numbers. But it's not included in this.
Or UPK as well, that makes sense. So we're, we're seeing the trends of, of declining numbers of students, but also we all, we added seventy-two students in our UPK population.
Right, and these numbers are what they're using to base the forecast on enrollment on. And because that's number is, that's why I meant by an artificial number. It's sort of, it's not completely all of the pre-K students that we have in the district. It's capped by how many spots we have to enroll students in. So that's why it's not included in the projections. Does that make sense?
Sort of, but I'm good with it right now. My problem is we got classrooms, we got teachers, we got students, we got expenses, we, we have all of that.
And all of that gets reported, yes, all of that gets reported, but this is the numbers that are used for the enrollment projections. And that's why they don't include them because it doesn't include all of the students. Like kindergarten, that number includes all of the students. UPK, there are more four-year-olds out there than what are in our program. That's what I mean by that. Does that make sense now? Okay, but we do, don't worry, all of that gets reported in all that state data, and they are in our, like, student information system, and everything gets uploaded into Level One and all that.
It is important, though, for the community to understand that the population of students is not falling down, it's falling up. And it's still is that. In addition, uh, universal pre-K has resulted in, uh, in, uh, wrapped our total population within schools. And of course, there, we're hiring the teachers, we're running the program, we're taking care of the classrooms. So there are kids, just, just like the ones in any other grade level. And so if you wrapped our population, our total population in the three schools over a period of years, there was a slight decline over the go period year, but now we've turned the corner and it's going back up. And, and, uh, uh, so I, I think that's important for the community to understand and to realize that the, that the taxes that they're paying and the investments they're making are not being, uh, attributed to a smaller and smaller student population, but, but rather a student population that's increasing.
Thank you, and it's also, we, we all have the opportunity to tour the schools and see that all of them are full. Every classroom, we do not have spare space.
Seventy-two little four-year-olds, three-year-olds.
They're in there.
They're there. But these numbers are just for the enrollment projections, so that's why they're not included.
Um, looking at twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, we have eighty-one for homeschool. And I think you said it's the beds, it's just on that, is it just that specific date is what it's.
That's the day, yep.
When, was that in the fall or was that a been in the spring?
It's always like the first week of October.
So that eighty-one isn't, that's not reflective, is that?
That's, yeah, so this is in October of twenty-twenty.
That's, okay, that's our first fall, okay, that's what I was just looking at. And it's continued, we still have like seventy-six in school.
Yes, but if you look in the report with the numbers, Erin and I, sometimes that number's a little misleading because we look, we added to that the number of families that are homeschooling. Because if a family homeschool, there could be multiple children that would be homeschooled per family. So that number's in that report.
Can you help us understand the, what parentally placed means?
Yes, so these would be EA resident students that are, the parents have decided to put them into private schools.
Like connected to some of them?
Yeah, yes. Or it could even be like Kenesha's High School, it doesn't mean that they're placed within our geographic boundaries. It could be Kenesha's, right.
And sometimes jargon is, uh.
Maybe we should put a little.
Private school, you say, you say private break.
Private school, yes. So the last chart that we have for you, this is, so these were the actual grade breakdowns in the numbers. This is this year, the number of students that we have in grade. And then this is the projection for the next three years based on the report that we had done.
Minus pre-K.
Minus pre-K, yep, it's okay.
I was surprised just looking at these numbers that, that our projection point out wasn't a little bit higher. Only because we do have a lot of them in homeschooling built. It, you know, we are, there are some spaces now where families are going to pay. So, I mean, again, it's just a.
Projection, uh, and they do that projection, they do not take any of that into consideration. They, they, it's a mathematical formula that they use looking back the previous year. They say, what is the, what is the, uh, the normal mathematical change from fourth grade to fifth grade over a period of years? And then they apply that to the next.
They call it a survival rate.
The only one where there's anything extra brought into the picture is kindergarten. Then, then they try to use live births.
Yep, yes, of the county.
Exactly, but that's also not reliable. Uh, so the, the kindergarten is the least reliable number, and all, all the folks moving in are, they're just extras that come.
Right.
On the beds.
They will be in the formula and so let it, they'll go through. I actually brought that up, I remember.
And Paul, the reason that they don't include pre-K in projections is because we only have seventy-two spots for pre-Ks where you can see the difference between what folks have coming in for K, so that's why they can't use it in there.
That's logical, that's part of.
Does that make sense now?
Yes, that's logical, yes.
Okay.
It is interesting to note, though, that, that every parent who wanted their child enrolled in universal pre-K was enrolled.
Yes.
And that's seventy-two children this year. Uh, but we can probably expect that by the time the kindergarten is going to be over a hundred.
Well, their projection is one thirteen.
There you go. So, so the, the, uh, the, the, uh, I would be interested in your keeping an eye on those children, those, the ones, the ones from seventy-two to one hundred thirteen with regard to, uh, the services that they need and whether pre-K might have helped them, had they.
And we do, that's part of the requirement of the grant where we have to do pre-testing, post-testing, and progress monitoring throughout the year. So we do have that data on the students.
Have to remember that the other preschool, the private preschool.
Exactly.
So parents may have chosen not to do pre-K.
I, I'm not implying that those children are somehow, uh, dis treated or not, or not, not given, uh, appropriate placement because hell, though, that, uh, that some families have a tradition of going to a particular private preschool, uh, program. So it's, uh, I think that's correct, and I think a lot of the, the preschool opportunities uh, that, that our children have been part of for many years have set them up, uh, to succeed, helps them to succeed in kindergarten and beyond. Uh, but I, but I still think we need to monitor those children to make sure that the ones didn't receive those kinds of services are identified and are, uh, and, and the families have counseled that if they have younger children, they ought to put their name in.
Yes, the interest in UPK continues to grow. We still get emails all the time, when are you doing the lottery for next year? All right, so I think, no questions, bud. You've asked.
Other question, do you know how many co-teachers we have?
Um, okay, um. Are you doing the math that you're having?
I'm trying.
Where are you starting? High school at Parkdale, yeah. Oh, I'm starting at high school. So special ed co-teachers, I think pretty much every one of our special ed teachers co-teaches at the high school, um, middle school, except for the eight-one-one class in St. Parkdale. So all of our special ed teachers actually co-teach and.
That's great.
Yeah, and, but then if you ask how many Gen Ed teachers would teach with them, like at the high school, a special ed teacher could come teach with like four to five Gen Eds, so, so there's a lot, but.
That's great.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, moving on, Ms. George, where, uh, item C, the business office financial report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the reports tonight go through the end of September. As of the end of September, we have a little over five million dollars in the general fund. Um, that's how we do our dashboard. Everything was in balance. We had expended approximately thirteen percent of our budget and received approximately sixty-seven percent. Cafeteria fund as of the, end of September, um, it's a little deceiving. Um, it's showing that revenues over expenditures are approximately thirty-two thousand dollars. And I believe that that's a timing issue with the expenditure bills not coming in. Um, in the federal fund, we had spent approximately six hundred and thirty-five thousand and we have received about three hundred and four thousand, which is typical. Um, and those are the funds that I have to report on. Nothing's really going down in the capital fund. Capital outback is underway. Nothing, nothing is going.
Question for Ms. George.
Questions?
Ms. Mambredi, first. Quickly, I'll get you on the grid. Um, it is super early, remember this is kind of a, a conservative projection. Really, the only thing you need to be aware around it is that we're not trending that we're going to be overspent or under revenue. Uh, because numbers are way too close at this point, but we've had nothing pop up concerning us. Um, OCS, really, that's going to hit in February, but again, it's trending to be positive, so we're not worried about it. State Aid, no more, on December fifteenth, uh, is the next update. We have no clue how spending is going to go, both for Erie County sales tax. Um, so we've got our first, was slightly positive. Um, your only takeaway on this whole thing is we're not overspent and we're not under revenue. But we're, we're, but it's not bad.
We remember back to the, the, one of the original purpose of this, where she was just to give us the red flags, right? So, so thank you.
Yes, so it just, so we are, right now, we're trending sixty-two thousand to the good. But I will remind you, the first four hundred and sixty-one that I just spoke for. But no, nothing that should keep you up at night.
Always appreciate it. Uh, any legislation to come before the Board of Education? No. Uh, item twelve, incentive items requiring board action. Is there anyone who would just withdraw a consent letter? I recognize that there was the, the question to, request to add a consensus item. I don't really ever talk about that. All right, they have a motion to approve the consensus item. Moved by Mrs. O'Leary. Seconded by Miss Daniele, discussion. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed, abstentions, carry seven zero. Item thirteen, item requiring board action. Uh, I am not going to read the full list tonight, we're going to talk about hundreds of thousands. If anyone needs clarification, let me know. Item A, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education perform a second reading to adopt the policies made in your agenda collectively known as new section one thousand. The plan to defer section one thousand of the existing policy manual. I have a motion. Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Second, seconded by Miss Daniele, discussion. If it's just very great. All those in favor? I, opposed, abstentions, carry seven zero. Item P, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education perform a second reading to retire the entirety of current section one thousand of the current policy manual as detailed in your agenda, with the understanding of their replacement with a new section one thousand. They have a motion.
If you have a rethought.
If you have a rethought, oh, sorry.
Further.
Further, thank you. Further, the superintendent recommends that the Board perform a first reading to retire.
Second, question, second, sorry.
Ms. George, we're changing that to second reading. Superintendent recommends the Board perform a second reading to retire the policies, uh, seven, the weapons in school and gun free school act as detailed in your agenda. And vote. Moved by Miss Daniele, seconded by Mr. Cassidy, discussion. Thanks for having me on the release, and thank you for reminding me to turn the page. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed, abstentions, carry seven zero. Item C, superintendent recommends that the Board of Education perform a first reading to adopt the policies listed in your agenda collectively known as new section two thousand, plan to defer section two thousand of the existing policy manual. I have a motion.
Sure.
Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Seconded. Seconded by Mrs. Porta, discussion.
I just have to say that these are so much easier to read than, than the original ones, so. Everyone on this committee, thank you for so much.
You should know that every single policy is reviewed initially by Mr. Mambredi, the, the existing policy or any that are associated with the one we're moving to, the OCS recommended policy, and then we review the new revised policy again. So thank, thank you, Mr. Mambredi. Another discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed, abstentions, carry seven zero. Item C, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education perform a first reading to retire the entirety of the current section three thousand of the current policy manual as detailed in your agenda, with the understanding of their replacement with the new section two thousand. I have a motion.
Small.
Moved by Mrs. Daniele, seconded. Seconded by Mr. Cassidy, discussion. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed, abstentions, carry seven zero. Item E, I'm just not enjoying this one. Sorry, Mr. West. I said I'm not enjoying this one. Item E, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education accept the resignation for the purposes of retirement of Doug Boswick, Director of Facility, effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. May I have a motion?
Vote.
Moved by Mr. Blowers, seconded by Mr. Brunson, discussion. Maybe impossible is replaced. Very much so, Ms. George. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed, theoretically opposed, but abstention, carry seven zero. Item fourteen, the next scheduled Board of Education meeting is the Special Board of Ed meeting on Wednesday, December seventh. That is the Facility Capital Improvement Project Discussion Tour and Q and A ahead of the vote on December fourteenth. Our regularly scheduled board meeting is Wednesday, December fourteenth, at the usual time. And the vote will take place in the middle school cafeteria on December fourteenth from seven AM to nine PM. Is there any other information?
Actually, just, just one comment on the legislative team meeting. That's, uh, that's going to be virtual tomorrow because.
Yeah, I did see that, thank you.
But I will not be telling you that, I'll be on the road tomorrow.
And the legislative breakfast was canceled on Friday. And the legislative breakfast was canceled on Friday.
All right.
Of course. State travel, Mr. Flowers. Any other events to come further? They have a motion to adjourn.
I will.
Moved by Mr. Cassidy.
Thank you.
Seconded by Mr. Flowers, discussion, all those bigger. Aye, opposed, abstentions? Carry seven zero. Thank you very much.